Good evening, everyone. Thank you so much for joining us this evening on our first official city council meeting for the 109th session of Wilmington City Council. My name is Trippie Congo, President, and along with all of my colleagues, again, we just want to thank everyone who has joined us in council chambers and for everyone who is joining us virtually. Today is Thursday, January the 16th. At this time, we will have our opening prayer by Maria Elena Rivera.
Heavenly Father, we have assembled to handle the affairs of our city. As we do so, we ask for your guidance and understanding. We pray that our city reaches a place... Heavenly Father, we have assembled to handle the affairs of our city. As we do so, we ask for your guidance and understanding. We pray that our city reaches a place of peace and safety. Keep us out of harm's way and bless those who are in authority. Let respect be key in all our endeavors. Amen.
Amen. And now, we will recite the Pledge of Allegiance.
Councilman Owens? Councilwoman Darby? Councilwoman Oliver?
Present.
Councilwoman Harley?
Present.
Councilwoman Willauer?
Present.
Councilwoman McCoy?
Yeah.
Councilman Johnson? Councilman Field?
Present.
Councilwoman Bracy?
Present.
Councilwoman Cabrera? Councilwoman Cabrera? Councilman Hackett?
Present.
Councilman Sp... Excuse me, Councilman Spadola and President Congo. Eight present and five absent.
Thank you. At this time, we have the reading of the minutes from our previous meeting.
December 12th, 2024 Wilmington City Council. City Council met in regular session with remote participation on the above date at 6:34 PM.
Mr. President, I move the minutes be accepted as written?
Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded, the minutes be accepted as written on the question. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carry.
January 7th, 2025 inauguration organizational meeting. The meeting was called to order by Mrs. Akira Granardo, Deputy City Clerk of Council at 8:25 PM. The processional was led by a selection from the Choir School of Delaware. The invocation was given by Reverend Patrick Burke.
Mr. President, I move this up... May I mean, I'm sorry. This is still sounding like the minutes. Okay.
Yes, it is from January.
I move the minutes be accepted as written.
Second.
Second.
Thank you. It's been moved and seconded, the minutes be accepted as written on the question. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carry. At this time, we will have our committee report.
January 13th, 2025, President and members of council. Ladies and gentlemen, we are Finance and Economic Development Committee, met by anchor location and remote participation to who was referred ordinance number 25-001 entitled "An Ordinance Constituting Amendment Number Two to the Fiscal Year 2025 Operating Budget, Being an Ordinance to Amend Substitute Number One to Ordinance Number 24-016. Have given this ordinance careful study and recommend council vote on it accordingly." Respectfully submitted, those members of the Finance and Economic Development Committee. Those members present, Councilwoman Harley, Councilwoman Bracy, Councilman Hackett, Councilwoman Oliver, President Congo, and absent with leave, Councilwoman Darby and Councilman Spadola.
I move the committee report be received, recorded, and filed.
Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded, the report be received, recorded, and filed on the question. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carry. At this time, we will have our City Treasuries Report.
Total investments, $492,8772.33. Total cash on hand, $13,931,402.43. Grand total, $505,940,174.76. Submitted, Dwayne Sim, City Treasurer.
I move the Treasury Report be received, recorded, and filed?
Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded, the report be received, recorded, and filed on the question. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carry. I would like to recognize council members Owen and Cabrera. Move with us virtually.
Thank you.
I'll accept the motion to move to accept all non-legislative business.
To move.
Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded to accept all non-legislative business on the question. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carry. At this time, we will move to our recognition resolutions. Before we have our in-person resolution, I would like to just recognize a resolution by Councilmember Cabrera, recognizing Carolyn Peak for her birthday, and from all of council, recognizing the Haitian Independence Day. Who is presenting the recognition of resolution for Tanya Washington?
I am, Mr. President.
Okay, you may come forward, please.
Okay. This recognition is coming from all of council. Whereas, it is the sense of city council to honor individuals and organizations who have demonstrated outstanding achievement deserving of recognition and acknowledgement. Council recognizes the Mayor's Chief of Staff, Tanya L. Washington, on a well-deserved retirement. Whereas, Chief of Staff Tanya L. Washington is a Wilmington native who graduated from Concord High School and went on to attend Norfolk State University, where she received the Bachelor of Science in Business Administration. Tanya began her professional career as an investment accountant at PNC Bank. In February 1991, she was appointed by then-City Council President James N. Baker... I'm sorry, M. Baker, to serve as fiscal analyst. Tanya went on to become council's legislative assistant and later Legislative Staff Director, responsible for the development of policies, legislation, and staff management. Whereas, in 2001, she's... Yeah, okay. Wait, oh. This is... Thank you. Whereas, in 2001, Tanya transitioned to the executive branch, where she accepted a position as Special Assistant to then-Mayor James N. Baker. She later served as a Deputy Chief of Staff and then Chief of Staff until 2013, when she returned to City Council as the Legislative Staff Director for the then-City Council President, Theopolas K. Gregory. In 2017, Tanya was appointed, announcing her retirement... I'm sorry. In 2017, Tanya was appointed Chief of Staff by Mayor Michael S. Przycki. She served with distinction throughout his tenure, announcing her retirement in 2024. Today, Tanya has stepped back in to serve as the interim Chief of Staff for Mayor John Carney, where she continues to manage the operation of $182 million budget and a city workforce of more than 1,000. And whereas, Tanya, as she is affectionately known, has served the city of Wilmington for more than 30 years and has been a woman of firsts. She is the first female and the first African-American Deputy Chief of Staff and Chief of Staff of Wilmington's in Wilmington's history. She is also the first... You got a lot of firsts here. First... First female African-American Legislative Staff Director in the history of Wilmington City Council. She has been recognized as one of Delaware's Delaware Businesses Times People to Watch in 2020. She is also a recipient of the YMCA's Black Achievers in Business and Industry Award, an honoree of the 17th Annual AIDS Delaware Do the Right Thing for Life Banquet, and an honoree of the 17th Annual Markovic A. Johnson Scholarship Luncheon. She is a graduate of Leadership Delaware and has served on the Boards of AIDS Delaware, Eastside Charter School, the Walnut and Central YMCA, and the Christina Cultural Arts Center. Whereas, Chief of Staff Washington has earned a reputation for taking on countless challenges, including going over the edge, rappelling down 17 stories to benefit Special Olympics Delaware in style. You go, girl. She has even been featured in the news journals Delaware Style Files for her unique wardrobe. Outside of her work, Tanya is a devoted wife and loving mother, and she has been married for over 30 years to her husband Sean, and they have two children, Sean Jr. and Skylar. Now, therefore, be resolved by the city... By the council of the city of Wilmington, that this council is pleased to recognize Tanya L. Washington for her many achievements and long record of dedicated service to the city of Wilmington. We wish her well in her future endeavors. Job well done.
If there is anyone from Tanya's family or friends that wants to come forward, you may do so. I'm not sure if anyone wants to say a few words.
No, my daughter, she'll stand beside me. Come on, Skylar.
All right, come on up.
Thank you, President Congo and all members of council for this recognition. I'm deeply humbled. As I was telling Jim, this is a full-circle moment for me. My career started in this chamber where I was appointed by City Council over 34 years ago.
Wow, 34 years.
I applaud and appreciate the members of council, your dedication to serve your community, and our residents depend on your stewardship. So, please continue the good work. Since my time here, I've had the privilege to work for some exceptional leaders. I want to first thank my mentor and one of the smartest men I know, and that is former Council President and Mayor James N. Baker, who first gave me the opportunity to work for the city of Wilmington. 22 years under your tutelage was a guiding force throughout my career, and I thank you. I want to extend my appreciation to former Council President Theo Gregory, who taught me to think strategically with confidence and deliberation. Your passion for our youth is unmatched. Gratitude to Mayor Williams for always checking in on me. Your calls are always very much appreciated. With special affection, I want to thank former Mayor Mike Przycki, who chose me as his Chief of Staff and taught me to think outside of the box and to perform at the highest imaginable level. We accomplished so much, and it was a wonderful eight-year ride. I want to thank my dear colleague and friend of 24 years, John Rego. Everyone knows we're a package deal. Couldn't have done this job without you, John. I'd like to recognize my right and left-hand support, Cheryl Mitchell and Sarah Luoma. Words could never express my appreciation for all that you did for me. And my man Henry's here. He's a part of my geezers in the girls' club, where we all meet for breath fix. All the former electeds, we meet for breath fix once a month. So, thank you, Henry, for being here, and thank you for your counsel over the years.
I'm fine now.
Okay. Finally, I want to thank my family and their continued support and sacrifice throughout the years. I love you beyond measure, and you mean the world to me. And thank you to the citizens, the residents of Wilmington, with all love and respect that I have for you always. Thank you.
Councilmember Oliver?
Yes. You know, I would like to thank Tanya for her leadership, even though we haven't agreed. We've had our differences on occasions. Being a black female, I've always admired her, and I really appreciate you.
Councilmember Johnson?
Just like the course.
I'd like to recognize Councilmember Johnson. He was with us.
Thank you, Council President. Yes, I would again like to extend my gratitude for Tanya from the time I was a young attorney working in law department. Always look to you, former Council President Theo Gregory, even Mayor Williams, other leaders about how to be a public servant. So, thank you for setting that model. I've had the opportunity to do a lot of things with you. I think we've done everything from sporting events to events in Wilmington to even going to Doha in the Middle East representing the city. So, I... And, you know, that trip actually showed me who you were, because you were the same Tanya over there as you were here. So, I really expressed my gratitude, and I thank you for doing, you know, what you're doing. I can't look for... I look forward to the next phase, and much vacation for you. Many vacations.
Councilmember Harley?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. Oh, wow. Let's see, when I first started on council and I met Tanya, I had actually heard about Tanya Washington before I even got on council in terms of this African-American black woman that is a sharp knife in the drawer. And so, when I actually got on council and met you, Tanya, I have to admit, and I think, you know, I've shared these sentiments with you, you know, one-on-one, that, you know, I just think that you're an outstanding leader. You're not only, you know, know, understand government, but you are strategic. I heard you say that, I think it was Theo Gregory that taught you about being strategic while mission accomplished. I thought, I think, and thought that, you know, you are very strategic, and I'm always so impressed at how well you know this city. No matter what question I had when I called you, from the highest to the lowest, and when I say highest to the lowest, because some of the areas, I didn't think that you got that deep in the weeds, honestly. So, I'm just, I'm always impressed by your knowledge, more than anything, your dedication to government, and you're all-around person. Like, when you're at work, you're all business. When you're with your family, you know you're a family person. When you socialize it, you that girl. You are that girl, okay? And so, I absolutely love that about you, because it reminds me, honestly, of myself. I'm 100% into whatever hat I have on, that's what I'm into, and I love that about you. I'm just happy that you're able to retire and enjoy your family. I know that you've got those grandbabies on the way that I know you're going to be able to love on and spend time with them. And again, congratulations on your retirement, and thank you for all that you have done for the citizens of Wilmington.
Thank you.
Councilmember Cabrera, followed by Councilmember McCord.
Thank you, Council President. Well, Ms. Tanya Washington, we go back a long way. It was such a pleasure to work with you. When I served my first term on council under President Theo Gregory, you were so on point. You kept that office organized, kept us all in line and organized. It was great to work with you in that capacity. And then, to work with you as a Chief of Staff, with Mayor Przycki, your professionalism and what you bring to the table. I mean, you've been at this for a long time. You deserve to have your time off, but we definitely could not have done it without you in both roles that you've had, in all the different roles you've had throughout the city, serving under the different mayors and presidents of councils. So, you know, I consider you a sister, a friend. I know we're not going to see the last of you, and we'll get to have more time now to do a little socializing. But I want to thank you for your professionalism and for always keeping things on point and providing a bigger picture to all sides of an issues, because the issues facing Wilmington are not easy, and there is not a one-stop solution or one way to do things. We have to look at things in different ways, through different eyes, and I appreciate the vision and what you brought to the table so that we could see things differently as well and come to a consensus to work together. So, I appreciate you and your professionalism. Thank you, I love you, and congratulations on your retirement.
Thank you.
I will miss you.
I'll miss you, too.
Councilmember McCord?
Thank you. Tanya, I'm so sorry I didn't call you up. Honestly, I thought you might have been waved up by someone else. My apologies. But I just would like to say, thank you so much, Chief of Staff Washington, for all that we have learned. And they are right, the person that I've met inside the office is so totally different from the person I got a chance to, you know, to maybe have something to eat or have something to drink with, getting a chance to know your personality, understanding who you are in one space, and then who you are when it comes to trying to get work done. You know, I can totally respect that. And then also, reading, getting a chance to look over that information before I came down here, and I'm like, oh, my gosh, she's done so much. It's something really to, you know, to be proud of, and I know I've been teasing you for the past couple of weeks, as I know you're trying to pull that ripcord. I know you're trying to join us at Parish, are you ready to go? But, you know, you did the job, and you deserve to get your rest, and we are going to miss you.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Councilmember Bracy?
I think everything's been said about how awesome you are, but I do want to echo everyone's sentiments. I remember when I first was appointed, and you and the mayor took me to lunch, and you was like, okay, what are you doing? What's your plan? And you got right to business, and you were like, we're going to help you, we're going to show you, you know, we're here to support, but are you serious about what you're about to do? And ever since then, you've always been that voice of leadership, and also a friendly smile, and, you know, a fun text, you know, to keep us going when things are rough. So, congratulations. It's a well-deserved honor. You've worked extremely hard for this city, and we're excited to see your pictures from Fiji and wherever else you are when you're on vacation.
Yeah, it's happening.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. At this time, I believe there's going to be a video presentation in honor of Ms. Washington, Mrs. Washington. in honor of Ms. Washington, Mrs. Washington.
Joe, I know I've been a little crazy.
But still, my point is just say a little bit about Tanny. Because I talked to her a lot and I'm just going to do a little something.
Tanny Washington has been a friend. I think that another person should be honored, you know, regardless, you know? And she did her job by standing up for Prezicki. That's her balls. Rather be white, black, or green. That shows you something about her character because she could have. Like, some people on council, they left and went this way, that way. She stood there and she stood the fire. And it hurt. It hurt. It hurt, you know what I mean? And people get hurt because they say anything.
Well, but I'm going to just take this in a totally different direction because I'm really interested in not only my panel members, but also the audience. I mean, we're coming up on September 10th. It's a very important election on where the city is going. So, I'm just curious to see where people, what they're looking for in terms of an elected official and, you know, just to get an idea of where they see the city now, where they wanted to go and who that person, maybe you can keep the name to yourself, but what you're looking for in terms of people's platforms and policies going into this September 10th election.
Okay, and as far as sympathy resolutions from all of council, a sympathy resolution for Chief Apostle Patricia Williams. Also, from all of council, a sympathy resolution for Isabella Fitzgerald, who's a former Pennsylvania state rep. And from all of council, a sympathy resolution for Richard Miles Smith. From Councilmember Cabrera, sympathy resolutions for Hugo Fred Bordon III, Edwin Rodriguez Senior, and Victor Padavini. From Councilmember Harley, a sympathy resolution for Leroy David Grayson. From Councilmembers Pedola, a sympathy resolution for Howard G. Show Jr. And from Councilmember Oliver, sympathy resolutions for Stephanie Pinkney, Gertie Black Ross, Robert Craig Tan, and Vafel W. Wingfield Senior. At this time, we will move to public comment. As a final reminder, please keep your comments within three minutes. Once you have 30 seconds left, I will give you a final reminder to wrap up your comments. Please don't direct your comments to any specific council member, but please direct all of your comments to me as the president. And also, when you come forward, please introduce yourself. We do have two people, three people who have signed up for public comment. First, we're going to hear from Tony Dunn. Thank you for joining us. Please introduce yourself.
My name is Tony Dunn, from the 2nd District, Wilmington, Delaware. I'm a Wilmingtonan, been here all my life. And I want to first congratulate everyone who is back here for 109th city council members. And I'm hoping that we can see some change in the city of Wilmington. Some of you have been here for over two terms. And I got to speak for the people where I come from. We need city council to let us help you help us. City council can't do it without listening to people like myself. We need to be at the table for serious decisions, especially when it comes to housing, mental health, drug problems, and violence. If you do not come to us, you don't know what's going on in our community. Most of you have made it out of there, but there's thousands that are still there. Gentification in our area is serious. You talk about homeless and people being homelessness. Why is it that we allow Wilmington Housing Authority to close down a subsidized housing community? That made Wilmington more homeless. We need city council to do something about that. Those houses over there, I grew up in them. They're strong houses. They could be rehabbed by the brothers and sisters that are from this city that we say is a great city. We need city council to work closely with the mayor, closely with places like Wilmington Housing Authorities and Section 8 to change our environment for our people that are struggling every day. Y'all know it, you walk around here, just like I do. I'm asking you to let us help you help us. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Doc, Professor Ezra and Alicia Clark, may come forward, please. Thank you for joining us. Please watch your step once you get to the podium and please remember to introduce yourselves.
Thank you. Hello, can you hear me? Yes, good evening, everyone. Hello, council, welcome back. It's good to be here. Thank you for having us this evening. I'm Alicia Clark with the Center for Global Africa. Professor Ezra is there. I guess you're not coming up, okay? We're here this evening and I have two special guests with me. Midline Estimbo.
Estimbo.
And Kada Doriska. From the Haitian Coalition of Delaware in Sussex County. And so, I'm really excited that they made their way here to be here at the city council meeting tonight. City council passed a resolution recognizing Haitian Independence Day, which is January the 1st of every year. So, January the 1st, 1804, the island of Haiti became the first black republic and it was the first successful slave revolt that ended in freedom for enslaved Africans. So, the Center for Global Africa is working closely with the Haitian Coalition of Delaware to ensure that this important Independence Day is known throughout our state. So, we appreciate city council recognizing it today and I want to turn the floor over to these two young ladies to talk a little bit more about the work that they do. And we also want to note that Senator Darius Brown has also passed a resolution in the Delaware Senate.
All right, thank you. Please introduce yourself. I'm going to ask WITN to please reset the time so the ladies may have three minutes each.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening. I am Kada Doriska, co-founder and co-chair of the Haitian Coalition of Delaware. And this is my right hand and my left hand, Midline Awari, who is also the co-chair and co-founder of the Haitian Coalition of Delaware. The Haitian Coalition is an organization that advocates for the Haitian population. In Delaware, the coalition's mission is to improve the Haitian community's social, educational, and economic development in Delaware through amplifying community voices, collective partnership and collaboration, and fostering opportunities to intentionally address barriers faced by the community, in the community. We envision breaking down silos and cycles of intergenerational poverty and infrastructure disenfranchisement by connecting, cultivating, and empowering our community to create systemic change. We thank the city council of Wilmington for recognizing Haitian Independence Day. This is the first space that has done that and we are grateful and thankful for that accomplishment. We also thank President Congo, Alicia Clark, and Professor Ezra for their support and their help and their guidance also. Today is one aspect of the dream that comes true is, you know, it's fulfilled because without knowing that a group of people is here, you're not really able to address their needs and not see them as part of a monolith. So, we're grateful again for recognizing them and saying that we, and we don't want to miss the opportunity to acknowledge their contribution and their needs within the community. This is the right step in showing our community that, you know, they are seen, they are heard, and they are wanted. And we're excited to work together to elevate the voices of our community in collaboration with different organizations and to help meet the needs of the Haitian population and continue to build a stronger and collective Delaware and a diverse Delaware.
All right, thank you.
Close, I don't know if you know this, but as of 2022, the Haitian population in Delaware was estimated at over 5,000 people. Delaware has the sixth-highest proportion of Haitians compared to its population and Haiti is the third-most common birthplace for foreign-born Delaware residents. And the Haitian population in Delaware has nearly doubled from 2010 to 2022. So, it's a growing community. It's a community that needs to be acknowledged and recognized and the history of Haiti is so important for us to understand. This work is important to the Center for Global Africa, who you all support and we appreciate you because it's also reflective of the diaspora and the 6th region and people of African descent. So, as we continue to work in this space, we will be reaching out and engaging our brothers and sisters who comprise the diaspora and make up the 6th region. So, we, again, thank you for your recognition of Haiti Independence Day and we look forward to continuing to work with you in the years and days to come.
All right, thank you. All right, thank you. There has no one signed up virtually, so at this time, we are going to move to legislative business. Councilmember Harley?
Yes, Mr. President. I have an ordinance to present on your behalf and call for the third and final reading.
Ordinance 25-001, Agenda Number 0005. An ordinance constituting Amendment Number 2 to the fiscal year 2025 operating budget, being an ordinance to amend substitute number 1 to ordinance number 24-016.
Mr. President, I move that it be known as the enacting clause of the ordinance and call for the yea and nay vote.
Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded, that be known as the enacting clause of the ordinance and call for a yea or nay vote on the question.
Yes, Mr. President. Before I get into the details, a little details in terms of this particular amendment, I do want to say that this amendment is comprised of amending entries in three different departments. And I will get into all three departments, but before that, I just want to say, as it relates to Wilmington City Council, speaking on behalf of Wilmington City Council, I believe, for our amendment, now is the time for us to answer the call to action as it relates to being a voice at the table to support Wilmington students. And of course, our particular, one of our amendments is speaking directly to that in terms of Wilmington City Council being able to answer the call after it has been presented to us for at least since I've been on council for the last eight years. So, I am proud to say that when State Rep Namdi Chikwocha and Senator Lockman came to city council to speak to the committee of hold, committee of hold, which is all council members, the urgency was definitely there and I heard it in a way that I felt that we really, really should be thinking about how we really can do our part. Most of us know that we have a lot of issues and problems within our education system and we know that it's going to take all hands on deck. Educators, elected officials, parents, the community, business owners, the whole community. But, most certainly, I do believe that Wilmington City Council, we have a place at the table and this ordinance will position us to kick off exactly that, to be able to do our part and to be at the table. So, having said that, for city council's department, the one amendment is the legislative aid, to add the legislative aid financial controller, which will be split funded of 75% from the general fund and 25% from CAT, the CATV fund, and an annual salary of $76,000. And also, the Director of Educational Advocacy, which will have an annual salary of $110,000, which has already been stated, that's pretty low, but that's at least where we're going to start. So, those are the amendments for Wilmington City Council, our particular department. The other amendments are for the administration and I would like to mention that there is going to be six positions actually added in the mayor's office, which will be a Special Assistant for Community Engagement with an annual salary of $89,300. A Constituent Services Officer with a salary of $70,000. The Director of Community Engagement with a salary of $125,407. A Director of Special Projects with a salary of $110,263. An Executive Assistant to the Mayor with an annual salary of $63,000. And the Mayor's Office Receptionist with a salary of $55,000. So, those are the particular ones that are being added. And then, there are a few that are being deleted. And the following four positions that are going to be deleted in the mayor's office is the Administrative Assistant, a Special Assistant to the Mayor, the Neighborhood Development Director, and the Best Practices Innovation Specialist. And then, there's going to be upgrades to two positions in the mayor's office, which are the Special Assistant for Community Engagement from one-level salary to another with no salary change. And then, there's going to be changes to titles for two positions in the mayor's office. The change, to change the Digital and Social Media Manager to the Deputy Director of Communications and to change the Office Manager Administrative Assistant to the Mayor's Office Director of Operations. And lastly, to increase the mayor's annual salary to $185,000. That's the second department. The third department and last department and amendment is just a title change for the Office of the Treasurer, which is two positions. One, change the Pension Manager to the Retirement Benefits and Pension Manager and change the Debt Manager Systems Coordinator to the Cash and Investments Portfolio Manager. Those are the amendments for all three departments, Mr. President.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Johnson?
I'd like to add, my name is a cosponsor. This is, it can't be overlooked just how important the changes are. Number one, I'll start with obviously council, I commend council president for staying on this North Star of focusing on our kids and youth. So, you know, similar to what we did in 108 with focusing on CPSI, crime, different violent strategies, we're taking the next step and doing the same thing with education. Let's look at a multifaceted way of approaching it. So, I'm looking forward to this and we'll look back on this tape and hopefully, once we get to upgrade it, you know, stats and data, we see that this was part of a big sea of change. The mayor's office, improvements can't be overlooked. They did listen to council as a group. We told them during 108, the administration, we talked about neighborhood engagement, having people at community meetings, having people at MPC meetings. Mayor Carney has taken that heed and he's going to be having those people at the meetings. So, all of us commend the Carney administration for working with us and having people actually in the community meetings. So, WPD has done a great job. I know I see Captain Rosario here as well. He's always in the meetings, but it's great to have someone from the mayor's office there too. And the rest of just housekeeping matters, you know, some title changes, but... And the rest are just housekeeping matters, just, you know, some title changes, but these are the two big changes, I believe, are contained in this piece.
Thank you, thank you, Councilmember Oliver.
Yes, Mr. President, I too would like to congratulate yourself in this session for bringing back the Office of Education. I received a call today from former President Theo Gregory stating that they did have a Office of Education when Mayor Seals came in for three years, from 1992 to 1995. It was incorporated with youth and families, and new administration came in and deleted it. So, he asked me to extend his congratulations to you for taking a stand and not making, for people to say that council doesn't have a part in education. So, I'm glad to be a part of this body who has adopted this, and I also would like to be a co-sponsor. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Just before we return back to Councilmember Harley, I just want to thank, especially want to thank the staff who has helped me just craft what has needed to be done for, to make this happen, to make this reality. I want to thank Helen Rogers, Helen Rogers, Helen Anderson, who was in the audience. She has, she was one of the voices that was at the Committee of the Hold meeting when her brother, State Rep. Namdi Chakocha, her uncle, Council, County Councilman Jay Street, Senator Tizzie, when they all were here, there were several more people here just fighting for education and pleading for us to get involved. So, I just want to thank you again, Helen. Thank you for staying true to your roots. We all know who your father was and how important he was to this city. Brother Hicks Anderson, I know you are making him very proud, and it is my intention, it is our intention on council, to, to do him right also, and to just continue to fight the way he fought and advocate the way that he advocated. Got to thank Dr. Kendra Marshall, Elijah. Thank you so much just for, for everything that you have done just to make today possible. Thank my colleagues who have co-sponsored, and my colleagues who hopefully will support this effort in just a few more moments. And a special thanks to the public, those of you who came out today just to show your support and love, and those have, who have just been supporter since we came up with the idea of creating this Office of Educational Advocacy. We're going, we're going to continue to need your input. We do not know all of the answers. It's going to take all of us just to, just to help our children. So, I'm really looking forward to the challenge. Councilmember Harley, any closing comments?
Mr. President, I just want to say that I'm...
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. I just see that Councilmember Kobe Owens has his hands raised. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to say, one, I am excited to be a part of this 109th council where we're re-centering our community, especially our youngest citizens here by taking this step. I am excited to support this and would like to be at it as a co-sponsor. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Harley.
Yes, Mr. President, I am also very happy and proud to be a co-sponsor of this very important legislation. As I already mentioned earlier, how it is really, the time is now for Wilmington City Council to respond to the call of action. I'm very happy that it is now that we are doing this, and for our community to know that we do plan on continuing to reach out to you, to hear, to receive your feedback, and that we definitely are planning to continue to stay connected and work with our educational experts and partners that are out there as it relates to putting this office together and finding the right person to lead this office. We have a number of experts that are out there that are engaged in the work, and we do not have to reinvent the wheel. So, that's the one thing that I'm excited about, is that we do not have to reinvent the wheel. All we need to do is reach out to find out where can City Council get involved and continue to work together, because clearly, our children in Wilmington are suffering not only as far as their education now, but their future is also being impacted as it relates to prospects for jobs, career readiness, and, and also as it relates to their families emotionally and psychologically, they are being impacted. So, I'm happy today to be a co-sponsor and that we are finally answering the call to action. That's all I have, Mr. President.
Thank you. Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilwoman Owens?
Yes.
Councilwoman Oliver?
Yes.
Councilwoman Harley?
Yes.
Councilwoman Willauer?
Yes.
Councilwoman McCoy?
Yes.
Councilwoman Johnson?
Yes.
Councilwoman Field?
Yes.
Councilwoman Bracy?
Yes.
Councilwoman Cabrera?
Yes.
Councilwoman Hackett?
Yes.
President Congo?
Yes.
Eleven yays and two absents.
Declare adopted.
That's all I have, Mr. President.
Thank you. Councilmember Hackett?
Mr. President, I have an ordinance to present on your behalf and call for the first and second reading.
An ordinance to authorize and approve an agreement between the City of Wilmington and the Lero Corporation for On-Site Engineering Services for the WITN-TV station.
First reading of the ordinance.
An ordinance to authorize and approve an agreement between the City of Wilmington and the Lero Corporation for On-Site Engineering Services for the WITN-TV station.
Second reading of the ordinance.
Mr. President, I move that be known as the first and second reading of the ordinance and refer it to the Finance Economic Development Committee.
Second.
It's been properly moved and second that be known as the first and second reading of the ordinance and refer it to the Finance and Economic Development Committee. That does conclude our legislation for the evening. This time, we will go to petitions and communications. Councilmember Owens?
Nothing tonight, Mr. President.
Councilmember Darby? I'm not sure if she signed on. Councilmember Oliver?
Yes, Mr. President, I would like to make the announcement, like to make an announcement that the Third District will be participating in a day of cleanup for Martin Luther King celebration Saturday. I will, we will be, the Third District will have a cleanup outside Browns and Boys Club, East 17th Street, from the 700 block to the 900 block. Normally, every two months, we pick a block on the north side, so this is just a continuation of our cleanup committee for Martin Luther King weekend. So, we have students and adults from the Browns and Boys Club that will be assisting us with that cleanup. Also, we are, the Third District is having a, collaborating with the YMCA to clean up the Helen Fame Garden. Oh, I was going to say granddaughter, April, she just left. She was the first city council minority.
Oh, I didn't see, okay.
Yeah, so, we will be cleaning up her family's garden. She was the first female, minority female in city council. It's on the east side, and the Y has various companies, I think it's Bank of America, and with this, along with the youth from the Y will be cleaning up on January 20th. The cleanup is Saturday, the 19th, and that's seventh, Browns Boys Club, but the YMCA is the 20th, and it should be nice. It's going to be a lot of people, family, youth, and it's open to the community on 10th and Pine. If anybody would like to show up, thank you, that would be all.
Thank you. Councilmember Harley?
Yes, Mr. President, I just want to mention that for the month of January, most of the Fourth District civic associations have had their civic association meeting, the East Side Civic Association, Midtown Brandywine, and our South Bridge Civic Association. However, Trinity Vicinity will be having their civic association on the last Tuesday in this month, which is January the 28th, and that's being held at Sacred Heart One on 10th and Monroe Streets. And I think, and just to remind everyone that there's going to be a number of activities going on for MLK, and please just go to the City of Wilmington's website. We have a number of locations that are actually doing cleanups on, is it the 20th or the 21st? The MLK, your cleanup?
21st.
19th, 20th, and the 21st.
So, everyone, just check it out, go to the website. I saw a number of cleanups and things that are going on, and so, just, all, let's just get involved. That's all I have, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilmember Willauer.
Nothing tonight.
Thank you, Councilmember McCoy.
Nothing tonight.
Thank you, Councilmember Johnson.
The only, only announcement is that there's, is a, since it is, as Councilwoman Harley said, civic association meetings are starting up again. Southwest is having their first meeting in the air at Woodlawn Library at 6:00 PM on Wednesday, January 29th. Please come out and share your ideas.
Thank you, Councilmember Field.
Yes, I have, I want to announce a concert that I was just coordinating with Councilman Kobe Owens. I forgot to send him to, this to him earlier, but my mom is on the board of the Delaware, Delaware Music School, and sent me a flyer for, there's a big concert tomorrow night at the Wilmington Music School at 4101 Washington Street in honor of Dr. Martin Luther King. It's a free concert. It is, the lineup looks excellent, and I highly recommend this concert to anybody. You can find it on the Music School of Delaware, Delaware website and Facebook page. And again, that is 7 o'clock tomorrow night, January 17th, a concert in honor of Dr. Martin Luther King at the Wilmington Music School.
Thank you. Councilmember Bracy?
Nothing tonight.
Thank you, Councilmember Cabrera. Councilmember Hackett?
Yeah, real quick, I just want to thank City Council staff for inauguration and setting up for a new City Council member. It was beautiful. It was right on time, just what we all needed. I want to thank family and friends in the City of Wilmington for coming out and joining us. You are absolutely right about that, Councilman Field. Tomorrow is, the Wilmington Music School will be having something. My nephew from Kumba will be presenting, so I will be there.
All right, thank you. Going to circle back to Councilwoman Cabrera.
Yes, I'm sorry, I had not unmuted my microphone. I started off by first welcoming all the new members of City Council to their first official meeting in the chambers, looking forward to working with everyone. The weather forecast is going to be extremely cold in the upcoming week. Just want to remind our constituents, if you need help with heating, with services, with anything that is going on, please call 211, which is the state, 311 for the city, check in on your elderly neighbors, because a lot of people do not ask for help during these times, but the weather is going to be bad, and some folks just can't afford to have heat in their home. So, please seek out some of the resources that are out here. The same thing, if you see anyone out in the street, any of the homeless population that's not going for help, to please make sure that you call Wilmington PD, non-emergency number, or the emergency number, and have them come out. There will be a lot of activity surrounding Martin Luther King's birthday, so I hope that people will participate. There will be a worship service at Canaan Baptist Church at 6:00 PM on Sunday for those that may want to attend. So, just wishing everyone Happy New Year, and hope that everybody stays warm, and just looking forward to working with my colleagues. That'll be it, thank you.
Thank you. I just want to, again, thank everyone from the public who came out, who came out this evening for, for our meeting, also those who are watching virtually. We just want to encourage you to, to continue to come and speak publicly about what your concerns are. If we can help you with anything, please give us a call at our City Council office at 302-576-2140. Again, our number is 302-576-2140. I want to welcome the new councilmembers, Councilmember Hackett and Willauer and Owens. Also, want to welcome some of our new staff who was here with us. We have our Assistant Deputy Clerk Maria Elena Rivera. We have our new City Clerk Akira Bernardo, and then we have our new Chief of Staff Elijah Simmons. So, want to welcome you to the team, welcome all of you to the team. And with that, I will, oh, I'm sorry, thank you. She's on it, see that? I knew we had the right person. We do have a letter that we weren't read into the, that we weren't read in.
The Wilmington Center for Education Equity and Policy, co-led by Lynn Howard and Ray Jones Avery, both daughters of educators and first-person witnesses to excellence in education, are unapologetic, are unapologetic about the center's vision. Black and brown children living in the City of Wilmington will no longer be harmed by poor educational experiences. Through unique cross-sector collaborations guided by authentic voices and evidence, the WCEEP envisions a Wilmington where children are guaranteed an exceptional education. Our mission is to ensure that each student and educational entity of the City of Wilmington has access to top-notch services benefiting the full range of student potential, needs, and interests in the service of their sustained success. The WCEEP origin story began on the ninth floor of this building, birthed at an inclusive table representing council, the office of the mayor, nonprofit leaders, students, and everyday ordinary people who love children and our city. Focus areas, advocacy. Our objective is to advocate for policy and practice at all levels that directly impacts the education of black and brown students. Our objective is to establish the center as the leading voice for the advocacy of black and brown children. Community organizing, our objective is to build a community army. Our objective is to educate the public about educational challenges and opportunities for black and brown children. Research, our objective is to identify policies and practices that result in desperate outcomes for black and brown children in the City of Wilmington, identify evidence-based policies and practices that have positive effects on educational outcomes. WCEEP supports the concept of the Office of Advocacy and Education. The rallying cry for reclaiming our power and obligation to our children has been long and persistent. It is critical that the citizens of Wilmington and our elected representatives play a more direct role in shaping and monitoring the educational opportunities and resources afforded to students, young and old, in the city. Active roles have been completely eroded over the past several decades. Establishing this office offers the promise of helping to restore the all-too-important role that citizens, students themselves, parents, and elected officials should play in the education of our youth. This approach recognizes that ensuring equitable access to quality education for our students takes more than books and buildings, but also investment in our children with funding, time, and collaborative efforts. Three certain measures of success must focus on, one, ensuring every child in Wilmington has a champion, because all of our children deserve a champion that never gives up on them. Two, working across difference, collaborating across all of the various efforts. The fragmentation largely keeps us running in place. Three, forming the right leadership team that has the complement of knowledge, skills, character, and courage to bring together players in a way that heals fractures and groups promoting self-interest at the expense of children and those who are raising and teaching them. Thank you so much, President Congo and City Council, for your vision, for your courage, for leading in an action-oriented way, and for doing your homework to stand the office up in a thoughtful, comprehensive way. Submitted, WCEEP Delaware.
Thank you. And before we adjourn, I would like to ask all councilmembers to please gather right here, the ladies who came and spoke on behalf of Haitian Independence Day, to take a picture with us before they head back home down to Sexxus County. So, if you can, councilmembers are going to gather right here right after the meeting. With that, I will accept a motion to adjourn.
Second.
First and second. Any opposition? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Meeting adjourned, thank you, everybody.